Proposed banner policy update. Discussion on the textile blue bins location. The mural for the town hall. View of the 2024 annual report. And the town administrators' report. We will jump in for the public comment. Anybody here wish to speak to something not on the agenda?
I have one.
You don't count.
Okay.
Okay, what do you got?
Just, um, I know the construction process has begun for the PFAS mitigation water line.
Yep.
And I think this was a question that sort of came up in an email I read just about an hour or so ago from a resident. He was wondering if things were still available to get like assistance with water filtration and stuff. So I just think it's good that it's on the record. And if you folks at home are listening, you can ask that question as we sort of learn more about this PFAS flu, if you will. I don't know the answer to the question, but I just think it's important for us to.
Well, there are probably few questions that need to be asked of them before an answer can be given.
Yeah.
So.
Do they have contaminated water?
All right, that's the big question.
They do.
Where are they? Which street are they on?
This was, um.
Not that we want to be divulging this information.
They're in the circle of trust, if you will. But I, I know, I saw the email and it came from, I was a little surprised from where it came from, so I just think this question may lead to other neighbors asking the same question.
Oh, yeah, well, so they should certainly reach out and figure out.
If there are options, that was my one concern is.
There should be options because, I mean, this has been discussed all along, knowing this plume is going to continue and how it's going to be addressed. So that's something that we should have in mind.
They should reach out to the school.
Yeah.
That's the party line, okay. Just in case you kept somebody in the building and they listen to us now, okay, you reach out to the schools, just then go from there. So.
Yeah.
Cool, right, that's one of the public comments.
But as I understand it, the DEP and the schools have still continued to provide bottled water and some residences have the onsite filtration systems based on the levels of contamination.
Yeah.
And that would be, I, I believe that would be done instead of the automatic is brought in front of everybody's home.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you know there was a window of opportunity there? That's what this email reference, which I was, I couldn't recollect that.
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't think so, I mean, this is going to be ongoing and.
Okay.
There's no closure to it.
Yeah, just, that email said like a summer date, I think it was like June 27th or, it said June 30th, just throwing it out there without, I don't have it on my phone, that you could get the water filtration system. And they were still hoping for assistance, it went to all of us.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not.
So.
Oh, I don't know.
It came to.
All that, but.
I didn't see it.
I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, it came from Margaret Scottsdale, one of her folks.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't receive that.
I didn't see that either.
Okay. So, TBD.
Yeah.
But it's good that they could still call the school from their knowledge, which I think is useful because
Definitely.
You never catch a line a couple of minutes.
Yeah. And as Leah said, there is a potential of that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Based on the testing once if that happens, they need to follow, they're going to need to follow up basically.
Yeah.
So, um, so it is still, I, I would say, an evolving process.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, uh, thank you.
Okay, good, anybody else? No? Okay, move on. Um, so we have one set of minutes from December 3rd, 2024. Anybody's read them, any issues?
I don't know. Move to, um, approve the meeting minutes from December 3rd, 2024.
Second.
In favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Board of, Board of Library Trustees. So, as we know, John Callahan has resigned from the board, being there for quite a period of time, so sad to see him go, but he's moving on to other things, I guess. So we have that space open and we have before us a recommendation by the board to appoint Amy Watson. That's you. Hi. Welcome. Anybody here to speak to her? Or speak for yourself?
You can introduce yourself, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I moved to town, um, you know, member of last year, so, and I actually live in the red house across the street from the library. I'm a huge fan of libraries. I have a master's in library information science from Simmons University. I worked for a few years in a law library, a law firm in Boston. I'm currently a senior manager of competitive intelligence at a software company in Lowell. But I've stayed really close to libraries throughout my career and prior to moving to Dunstable, I was a trustee for the Lowell Public Library for three years. So I had to give that up as a resident at Lowell. Um, but shortly after moving here, I got to meet Maureen and expressed that I was interested in getting involved with the library at some point, and so I've just kind of stayed close to that. And so when the opportunity arose, when John was resigning, it seemed like a good time to step in. I guess my family and I are like active library patrons. I also have a two-year-old son, so we're over at the children's department a lot. I think I'm very, I'm very attractive as like, um, multi-generational library user.
Great. Yeah, that's a fantastic introduction, thank you.
I'm not sure she's qualified.
They run a, a tight ship over there.
Do what you want, but you know. I think we can entertain a motion unless anybody wants to speak.
No, no.
Very lucky as a community and a library to have Amy on the board. We are really grateful for John Callahan and how much he's done for over 20 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Want me to read a motion?
Thank you for putting forward your expertise and volunteering time.
Move to appoint Amy Watson to the Library Board of Trustees with a term to expire on May 20th, 2025.
And I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, welcome aboard, thank you very much. So if there'll be a follow-up, um, she'll get a letter from the town clerk to go in and, or she can, yeah, be in touch with you and make it official.
You don't have to stay at the little meeting either, so you're free to run. If you have a two-year-old at home, I'm guessing you have other things on your list to do, unless you want the freedom right now. I always like to give people an apple.
Yeah.
Sure, you want to hear about these blue bins?
Oh, my God, it's like, it's best, it's like the Freedom Cow. All right, next up, we have the hazardous mitigation plan update resolution and adoption. Thank you for making that change. So this is great to get this finally done. This has been several years of working on this, along with MVP Plan, and we have them both finally done. So, um, before us is this resolution that the others have to sign it? Like just one of us needs to sign.
Other than this, how does, other than this, how does this get memorialized or?
So we, we, so FEMA.
Yeah.
So we've been going back and forth, we had to go, um, we had come back and forth with the state Energy Environmental Affairs and the MVP, um, plan. That's been a part of our work, as Leah was saying, we also looked at that, we can't do that either. But this is a MIMA FEMA, so we went to MIMA, MIMA provided feedback, we responded. Once we satisfied MIMA, we then went to FEMA and now we're at a point where FEMA has said, yes. Thank you. We sign off on this plan pending the select board's adoption.
Well, it has been in process.
It's been very low.
It has been.
Yeah, it's been, yeah.
So that's good. It's over there.
In accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 4, I move to approve the resolution as presented, adopting the Town of Dunstable 2024 Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? There being.
Aye. Aye.
All right, very good. So, um, is this a docu-sign thing or? Or do we have a hard copy?
Um, I'll get you a hard copy maybe in the meeting.
Okay. Good, all right.
You've got a question from the audience member.
Hi, Joan.
Is, uh, is that online somewhere where we can take a look at?
Is the packet up yet? Yes, the packet, the packet's up on the website.
Okay. Thank you.
Have fun reading.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
You gotta need a magnifying glass or some of that, because there's matrices that are.
Reading the electrical code.
Yeah.
So it was in 160 something pages for trying itself?
160 pages, yeah. Yeah.
How much of it was updated?
Oh, jeez.
Quite a bit, I feel like we went through a lot.
Yeah, we have, I think we have a redline version, if you want me to send you that, so you can see the actual.
Sure, I'd like to see the redline version.
I think we have that, if I have it, I'll send it to you.
Can I open my computer?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so we have a, an updated liquor license application.
So it kind of came to my attention really after, um, the Pariggs were going to up, uh, apply to transfer their liquor license upstairs temporarily. They decided not to do that. But we didn't really have a process for, um, transfers, changes of location. So I did some research and around some different communities. And these are like the standard things that would happen with a liquor license, so transferring the license, changing manager, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, with this new application, the old application, which is in your packet, that's the one that you're looking at here. That's the old, I don't know, this new one.
This is the new one.
Yeah, the old one, um, only really cared for, um, new and transfer.
And things change over time, so it's, if they sell the business, you know, it's good to make sure they could change the name of the manager. Yeah, that's a pretty standard.
And it allows us to, you know, have a, an application fee for those transactions, so it's not just a.
Well, I mean, it's a learning experience for us too, so as we go along, we bump into these things and sort them out. So, yeah, that, that looks great.
For, um, this last line in the bottom of the page, in the gray box, saying this application, this license application requires select board approval, police, fire, border health, building. Is that even for like changing the name of the business? Or like is it all, is it all encompassing for every one of these checkbox items?
Yeah. That's a great question. I don't know why they would need to sign off again, unless it was.
Oh, I think.
It's just like, you know, border health, yes, change your name, we don't care. That's what there's a lot of stuff that comes through us.
So I just wondered if they have to wait for, do they have to wait for a meeting though, in order for that approval to be received? You know, like, because you guys, you may take the Fourth of July off and you may not meet again until August 1st and then, I don't know, right, like.
Business in a small town.
That's just the way it kind of works.
I mean, it's kind of different.
Not that it happens a lot, but, I don't know, just for operating protocol.
It should be run past, you know, all the, uh, people that are.
Yeah.
Everybody that has a say in it.
There are certain things that probably wouldn't need everybody.
Yeah.
But there are some things that probably.
Certain you do.
Right, absolutely.
So. And then there are some things like change of hours. Maybe the, maybe you want to run that by the police if it's going.
Kind of the select board, yeah.
Select board, but doesn't need anyone else, I don't.
Yeah.
Okay. And I guess it's up to the business owner to be proactive.
Yeah.
You know, like have some foresight here, you know, unless you won't powerball and you're bailing, but. Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it, I just wanted, you know.
No, I think it's fair that every board that has been should have a, have a review of it.
Okay. Cool.
Because we may not know what other board may have, they may have an interest in the particular thing, we may think, well, it doesn't matter to me.
It's not in our wheelhouse.
Yeah, it's not in our wheelhouse, yes.
Yeah, it's administrative to some degree, like if it was like a change of name, could we authorize or do it on email or do a power thing and then certify the meeting? So certain types of changes, this is coming up, this is the issue. We don't.
Yeah.
It's just not as rather than, you know, like.
Yeah. The thing is, is sometimes there might be some other reason we might want to know and it's really, it'd be hard to make like a, a matrix.
Yeah.
Of when you notify who, so it might be easier to run it by each board and I just didn't know if we had. We do for border health, we'll let our agent do certain things, but if there's a question about it, it's like for some, she can sign off, if there's a question, she will want to ask anyone.
We could also be sent out to each department head simultaneously and that department head could respond and say, I don't need to address this.
We, and we have a sign-off form, so we can just send that out, reset it out and if anything's changed, it could be a, if anything's changed from the last place, you know.
Yeah, just, I mean, otherwise it's, like, it's, that's a great looking form and I think it makes a lot of sense because things do change over time, so.
And, you know, the truth is normally we probably just would have done this administratively, but the board took a vote prior on all the materials and the rules and rights, so we wanted to burn it back just to make sure you're comfortable.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I agree with you, I understand Karen's point about, you know, name changes may not need to notify the fight department, police department, but in, in a lot of cases, I think they do. They, they do.
Especially the floor change, you know, like the first, the second, second, the first.
Yeah.
That's certainly in the wheelhouse of a lot of different departments, so.
Move to approve the updated Town of Dunstable Liquor License Application dated November 21st, 2024.
Uh, second.
What's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Banner policy.
All right, me again.
We talked about this a while ago.
Yeah, it used to be, our policy used to be a banner and sign policy.
Yeah.
And it's, it was basically all about banners and there was one little paragraph that spoke to temporary signs at town hall. Our new sign policy cares for that. So I just took that out and I, um, updated it to say select board and it's just now a banner policy. I didn't change anything else other than taking that paragraph out.
Okay.
If we had, I mean, I, you know, I just was looking at this, that on the liability side, right? Town of Dunstable assumes no liability. In the installation, maintenance, removal or storage of banners, all sponsor organizations must sign a liability waiver in advance of banner installation. So that's, I, there's a couple of things, all right? In Massachusetts, you cannot contract yourself out of liability. You, you, there's no such thing. And I don't know whether this puts us in a position where we're. I, I don't know, but I don't think it's a big deal because every time we have to fly a banner, it's the one that's over the street. I don't, like, well, once in a while there's other banners someplace else, but for the most part, I don't think it's a big deal. My point is that let's say that some social organization wants to fly a banner and now we're asking them to sign a waiver and then the banner falls and lands on somebody's car or whatever happens because whoever put it up. How does that, how does this address that or? You know, is this social organization going to have a waiver and accept liability for that? That's what.
Well, it doesn't bring that up, oh, it's, it's talking about the install, maintenance, removal and storage, doesn't.
So what we, what we do is we have Maya, our insurer, has provided liability waivers to us for use for certain things. So we would just modify, I think we have it already done.
Okay.
We would modify the warranty.
Yeah, and that's my, that's my point, I think you got to just get that, I, I don't know how it gets worded, but I know that you got to get the, the, the waiver worked out so that it indemnifies the town from.
What's the most people who have, so it's a S P, so.
No, there's, there's been, there's a couple of companies that come in the town, Wave Guide comes in, Wave Guide is a antenna company and they come in and hang it, McDonough Electric's come in and hung one for us.
Nichols.
Nichols done it. Nichols.
Obviously, there might be like less than same.
Yeah.
We can say that they're insured for that kind of stuff, but.
They usually do it like, um, I think it's Dave. I've seen him do it like Memorial Day, banner went up and, you know, it's just him and then, like John Randall sort of coaching it along and, you know, it's vol, it's a volunteer effort really too.
Right, I have, yeah, I, I just didn't know, I, I know I wouldn't do it, so I was like.
Yeah, we've been fortunate, knock on wood, nothing sketchy has happened.
So it's not the highway guys that it.
No, the, the highway guys will do the flags along 113, but they don't have the apparatus to do the banner hanging, so.
You know, I don't think it's OSHA-approved the way they put the flag up there.
You don't think it's what?
I don't think it's OSHA-approved. Guy sitting in the driver's seat with an extension lighter in the back of the dumb shell and flying that.
No.
I'll try to remember the alphabet with my camera.
You and everybody else. Yeah? That's a, something. Offline.
Yeah.
Step ladder in the back of a dump.
Yeah.
Neither here nor there.
Yeah. I've never seen that.
I haven't seen it, but I guess if he's saying it's probably true.
Question from the audience member.
My chances are, they, they have a banner up all the time and they, if you're on the highway to town, you just, you're on the freeway down here. He'd up there cycling to transfer the banner every time it was done. And I don't know what it, what it was, you know, but they may have some kind of a policy.
That, so there, there is.
It's by dealing with liability and, and everything, yeah.
As part of the application process, there, and I don't know if this is what you were saying, Ron, it's not legal, but there's an agree button and then part of that says, um, the applicant shall hold harmless defendant identified at Town of Dunstable, blah, 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 towns employees, officials, volunteers, agents, from any and all losses, claims, lawsuits and expenses. And it goes on and on. So there is that as part of the application process, but they have to create it up.
And then. Myers will just give us the form, they got, along with their application, fly the banner.
Along with that.
We just, yeah, just, uh, to some of the departments who would have that, rely on volunteers, um, to use for volunteer liabilities, we're there as well.
No, I think this is good, it's good to get this.
Yeah. Move to approve the updated Town of Dunstable Banner Policy dated November 19th, 2024.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sue. Working. All right. The moment we've all been waiting for.
Can I say one thing? I sent it in the email and I sent it out to everyone, I said that the session started at 5:30.
Okay, well, we've got five minutes. Yeah.
To get people to.
Sure.
Let's discuss it, a little bin discussion.
Yeah, the 5:30. Okay, so we're going to, um, wait for a few more minutes before we have the bin location because it was advertised as being at 5:30, so we've got three minutes. So in the meantime, we will jump to the mural for the town hall.
Well, this ought to be interesting.
What are we going to hear?
We have an interesting meeting today.
We do.
So, um, also.
It is fun, fun stuff.
So, so when I get in the tag team this one, so we had every, every day when I walk in the office, if you look to the right, you see that.
Ugly space.
Ugly space where the bulletin board used to be.
Yeah.
And so it's something I was talking about, okay, this is ugly and kind of wacky, just, you know, fine. So one of the ideas we, we kind of brainstormed was to have some sort of mural painted. And so we kind of brainstormed, possibly having like high school students do it, or they could have a contest, or have them submit proposals and we were the select board, or we talked about cultural council maybe, maybe in the selection and supporting of, um, etc. So, uh, so that's in general what we were talking about, the motion before you kind of gives approval to that and, um, and, um, allows us to kind of prove, you know, from the guide line into the selection process to for you to consider. But we didn't want to, we don't want to go too far without, um, getting there, getting signed off and asked another, that's a good idea.
It's a little very big space, what is it, like four by six?
No, it's not even that big.
Four by six?
No, it's not big.
Um, anyway, the first question that comes to mind is have his start commission had a weigh-in on that, it being a historic building. I know this wouldn't be a permanent alteration, but.
Interior guts, I think that starts for the exterior, right?
Not necessary.
Is it? Okay.
Could the stage trim or stuff?
Oh, all right. I like that.
It's serious, I mean, I, it wouldn't be a permanent alteration.
No.
Just trying to be mindful of making sure all boards have a.
Yeah.
It's a bit, four by six.
If that, maybe four by six.
I don't know.
That's not four by six. I don't know.
Say it's four.
I mean, you, you want somebody to come in there and get something nice up there.
Yeah.
Welcoming.
Yeah. No, I think it'd be, I think it'd be.
I mean, or, I mean, don't be, that's what's been asked about the other office, hey. I mean, you could just, you could simply just pay it and be done. So like, that's, that, there are other options. That's often it, yeah.
And. Now, we have people in town who love, you know, artists who do, uh, some pretty nice work and you could do that as well.
Commissioned for, so the general power sentence.
Look at that one.
Yeah, that's actually, that's, that's not a bad idea.
So that could be like.
Having like, uh, having a, having a dedicated place for local art. Oh, and on a work taping basis, that's, that's an idea too, yeah.
I mean, so again, like, a part of me also thinks like a screen might be too, like an electronic screen might be too far to go. But it is also a space that a lot of people traditionally would go and look, what time is my meeting and where is it located? When you first walk in the door, am I going up, am I going down? So a part of me, I don't, again, I. But it, I mean, like, it just, tech, like, I know there's a, certainly much more of a cost, robust law of the technology, like a screen that's vertical that says, you know, planning board, you're meeting downstairs, select board upstairs, but is that where we should be trending to? I mean, you can look at that, I'll tell you on that. But a bulletin board is a maintenance. Yeah. Literally, I, I've seen that done at schools, like, it's a pretty common practice, because you put a nice frame around a monitor that's flipped on its side and it literally has meetings, it doesn't really go or. I don't know, and then it also could show pictures. You could also have it show pictures of towers that are happening from, or whatever, but.
This is an electronic?
Yeah.
I like the local art.
I, I'm looking at that, you know, I'm, I'm modernizing it a bit every time, so it could also show a local.
Electronic, funny electronics.
Yeah.
I mean, the only, the only thing you're going to have with that is the cost associated.
It's like a thousand.
Yes.
You get a bunch of screen, a tape. Yeah, it's hot, screen.
It's actually just. Does it? Well, you actually could just link it to the website.
I like it when you walk in the door and there's a little sign, Tate.
But that takes up pretty much time. Like that takes up pretty much time.
Tate's not, to set up an electronic, you know.
The twenty second century is scary, I know.
Hang a picture.
You wanted me to kill five minutes. Or option A, just paint it. I like the painting of the town hall right there in the wall too.
And there are high school and others artists in town where you could make that. We used to, um. Be a rotating basis if you didn't want to do a mural on the wall. And showcase local artists.
I think that would be kind of better.
Absolutely.
I like that.
Paint the wall.
Investigate that.
Be so, if things are, it's easy to, the pictures would be, would be different sizes. Different dimensions. Things could be fun. Maybe three goals. Without, you know, new things.
Well, you could put up some sort of like track system to be. So that is one device that then. So it's not.
But why is it? It could be like. There's a story behind that.
One minute to go.
You could have somebody. Spot. I mean, this is a whole. Paint for the thing.
Yeah.
That's probably good.
That's option D. Password. Yeah, so overall artwork and a fresh coat of paint in artwork sound very.
All right, we've successfully, ten minutes.
Well, let's see.
Let's go install a screen tomorrow. There's actually a really good app that does, takes characters and puts them up and rotates.
Tony has that at home.
Yeah.
All right, let's, let's jump back to the bins. So we've been having some major bin drop off going on for.
Down to the point where they have to call.
They have to have a police escort in order to go over there to empty the bins.
Yeah, so this is.
Really? Yeah. Why? Because they're.
He's at safety. He's at risk because he's had some. He doesn't want to go there anymore.
There's been some of you. He's being threatened because of his reaction to the bins. No, I think it's the.
The bin delivery guy. Service is the bin is the one that needs the. Yeah. And it's been issues, since that happened, there's been issues. Sort of vandalism of the highway here. Yeah, sorry.
So. Nobody's come up with anything.
There, there's. An idea too. You guys tour around for town and I think from, that one of the ideas would be possibly at the sand shed, the old salt sand shed. On rotten street.
Okay. Does that, is that paid?
No.
Isn't that.
Okay.
Right, residents can get stuff during the winters.
The other option was.
I don't know if. Even a potential.
I don't think so.
I'm sorry.
If it was offered originally, often again.
If we need. So that. Part of the solution we could.
There is a possibility that we had like crosses, like the expansion.
That little triangle area.
Yeah, did we? Cause there is, one of my things about having on one of their teams. Else was, and then we get the money and it's right there and we see. Wrong streets, that, you know, there's traffic, but. Their team is paying for us. And, you know, everybody sees it and so. Um. Alan and I had talked about it, but then.
Can I just run through the library again? Why, why?
Library's got a few problems. First of all, it's super private, which means you can't look at it.
It's actually really visible. Would you drive by there? You can see that parking lot, I think.
It's also. It's awkward in the now. They don't have a lot of room in that parking lot. I go over to seniors. And other times. Is that, I want to start quoting. Any events in the library, it's fairly cool. Trucks are gonna have trouble getting in and out of there.
These usually come.
But it just comes and goes. I mean, it's not like there's a constant flow of traffic. I mean, I mean.
People going in and out. The library doesn't want to see it. I see it as a place. It just really seems to be talking after hours. And. I, I, I'm a little bit concerned about the salt shit in the same way. Um, cause it's a little bit up and out of sight and maybe more going in to dump. Cause they will pick up, they really quote about it.
Yeah.
For the same time, you don't want to dig.
Yeah.
Dump it, cause.
So, so we, we did a little cruise around town the other day, last week, looking a little bit at some sites. The road. Is left of the post office that kind of just goes into the mud district. We talked about an option of putting those bins on the left inside of that. Where the mud districts are, if it was off of the post office's property.
Do we own the park or is the post office?
No, the road belongs to the developer for the mud district. Right? But he, he has said he wants to be okay with that, even if it's temporary. But what temporary is, we don't know. Temporary could be a weakness. It could be, absolutely. Yes, no, it's not. That was an option, so that lot would get cleared out. And there was some discussion about whether or not the post office needed to um, assent to it, but since that, that's a paper road. It was that much, it would be on the other side of that, which is the developer's property. So you can clear that lot. It's not level right now, but we could clear it and set those containers on that side of that. So you'd drive in, dunk your stuff in there. That was one spot. Second spot option was the library and you know, they would get tucked away in the back. It would work, to, to your point, um, that, that, you know, there could be some dumping going. We've had some dumping going on here. There was, you know, a couple of times TVs were left there. Computer monitors and the die.
We absolutely know about the dumping. But by getting the more visible things.
Well, if the dumping occurred when those things were at Smalls House, I don't know how we could get anything more visible than that.
No, I'm saying no matter where we put it, there will be dumping. The more private it is, the more dumping is. It's how. Uh, we picked up one, you know, the transfer. It was down on the back. You know, and if it was closed, we liked.
Oh, they did.
Happens every, happens every. Bins are no bins. People dump stuff they don't want.
So we looked at, we looked at the library option. We looked at the post office. We looked at the salt shed. You'd drive up inside. Containers to hug the street. We looked at that as an option. And I think the other one that we looked at was the land. And I know that it belongs to the land trust, but that house was there.
One more that, the one that burnt down?
Yeah.
Where the bench is now.
There's a bench now. That was.
What about? Just so we're, we're. Vision of maybe a little farm. The old brown wellhouse there across from Hardman's.
The cemetery.
Cemetery, Hardman's, old house.
The suit.
Yeah. Is it?
Line two.
I guess.
I actually kind of like the post office.
It would be off to the side. It actually, when we looked at it, as we draw around, look at these things, when we looked at it, it looks like. I mean, we wanted to be sure that we had the creative juices for it. Looked at every option that we felt was viable to us. You know, we, the fire station's not an option, the police station's not an option, town hall's not an option. You know, we went through this thing six weeks to Sunday.
We went through hell trying to figure out where to put the first item.
We did.
We wanted to do it. And it was six months. Before John thought of the place on where they work. Cause it was like, where can we put?
And we're in, we're in a pretty nasty situation with. That, that situation is over there.
Can I ask a question about this nasty situation?
Yeah.
Like, a part of me doesn't like negotiating, but I use the word terrorists. I'm like, so what?
Yeah, but it's all a loss.
So has the vendor opted to pursue charges for being threatened against the neighbor?
No.
That's on them then. Like just, just to be totally clear.
It's usually beneficial situation.
Right, so then. I'm not trying to be a jerk, but like. Would you just, you're empowering this neighbor to just run this.
Didn't we kind of move it the first time because citizens?
No, we had. I, I don't know. So let me, let me say this about that, because I love a fight. Okay? And especially where I know I can come out and talk. And I think in this particular case, we could, however, there's a saying, all right, and it's really true here. The juice may not be worth the squeeze. Right? And all's we're saying with that is, if we can, we can. Go into Air District Court, get a cease and desist order, have it served, monitor it. But in, you, you gotta remember that, and this, and, and as I say, I love a good fight. We're dealing with an unreasonable person. And you're trying to reason with an unreasonable person, we're gonna incur a legal fee. Something that in the end is not really worth.
You don't have any proof.
You, absolutely.
You don't think?
But it's a relatively good assumption.
It's costing this town money.
Yeah. Well, we have, we, we have proof that somebody. Since the bins have been there, we have proof, evidence that somebody is throwing.
Yes.
We don't know who did it.
And it would take more money.
It, it would and, and legal fees were getting incurred and maintenance of the legal agreement over time. You know, it's, it's, it's like a temporary restraining order. Someone's gotta pay attention. You know, it's, and believe me, I, I understand, I, I'd be the first one to get my hammer off my back on that, but I've looked at this thing six weeks to Sunday and I, you know.
Here's a better. When they go.
You know, I suppose that's. And so.
Why don't we put a no trespass? We allege that is threatened, said driver, no trespass.
The properties.
I know, it's just, it's such an odd. Again, it's such a poor showing for residents. Again, I can't emphasize that enough. So like, so we're just gonna move them back? So then you're just like. Like that's the other, like just say, you know what?
That's how the town's. Is people in which are. A lot of people, I was driving. So I think that's all the people that are interested, which is why people should drive down the road.
Not knowing it.
Because shameful people don't like the location.
Yeah.
And I'm making a statement. So now we have, we're making this thing about the old location, got some mileage. Got some expectations, it's set and it could move, it moved. I think the other side of the post office rode. Because I think there it's pretty visible.
Yeah.
But it's not right at the road.
No.
Post office isn't sexy, but it's control. Uh, it's not like we're putting it right up next to us. Then you can just drive right by it, mail off and.
And you have to saddle over fire MCO. Yeah, still there, Roger. MCO's gonna have to. They're gonna, we're gonna be putting it on proper, at least. And we'll.
Yeah, but we, we got some discussion with them already. Yeah, so I mean, this should be temporary too. We don't, we don't know how. At the end of this, maybe. That there's a permanent location right there. But right now. If he's acceptable to it and, you know, we don't want to use the salt shit. Whatever. And one thing I thought was not a bad location, that's, you know, library.
Man, how many people?
Everyone in the library, not times drives, navigating, but driving might be a thing. When there's stuff going on, they have groups in there, they're trying to. Around that, people dumping, around that.
Well, the thought was that it would go at the back and so there's a wood fence that runs that path. What we would do is just take out a couple of sections of that fence. And places. So we did not obstruct or direct. So the reason I say that is, you know, when there are presidential elections or there are elections.
Well, I think driving by to dump their stuff is gonna say, oh, all right, I'll do it next time.
Yeah, but I mean, we don't wanna, we don't wanna take up parking spaces.
Just to be certified. You have to have a certain number of. And so forth, so you don't.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. We would just take, I think we were gonna take out a couple of sections of that fact. And set those in as to that people could still park in the stalls over there. We wouldn't be reducing spaces. You know, is that the.
Dark things and groups going on in the library. That's not just collections. That's parking lots. I mean, I go, let me see you. Everyone's. People with that and the stuff going on, the exercise thing. Then the truck comes to pick up.
Yeah.
And somebody's gonna have to move them forward.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, I mean. Just a little bit of further discussion. I mean, we, you know, this, those blue bins, this is the, they, we've been at this probably year now. I mean, we, you know, this, those blue bins, this is the, they, we've been at this probably year now. You know, we, they've been, we've had them behind the police station. Police station. We put them at Swallow U. Those blue bins have been around the whole time. We should just. Cash all them and move them around.
No, the bins went to one space.
With the smells and then to the highway.
No, but in, in. In terms of discussion. Those things have been everywhere.
Honestly, I think, you know, just move them where they came from, and then. MCO says we have a temporary, and then talk about if we need to level round. By across the road from the post office, so to the. Get rid of the cases.
The question I've been asked the most is, can they be painted dark green?
Yes.
Is that a question? The visual effect? If they can be painted a dark green? I don't know, this, this is, this is like trademark business.
Blue.
Color, or, you know, obviously. They paint them that blue to be visible so people use them. Know where they are, and people that know where they are, people.
What other towns have these? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, and they, in the days we talked about, the other towns that have them were a bigger place than I remember.
I understand you're around this part of the country.
Yeah. I mean, the place I used to use, and we actually, again, I don't wanna go down there. These, I'm going to drive them below to a place, it has to do. Only during this.
I'm a grand. To go there too.
Right? And that's what I've been doing. For fabric, most types of vitamins.
Yeah.
Until bins came. So.
There's not, I mean, there was a set of bins. Down at the church in Pepper. I know the church has got a new name, but. And, and then they also had paper, the paper, the alabadi was in the papers, like, until they went bankrupt. There are no bins there. So I don't know, Mr. Harris, I don't know whether, I, I've not seen him squat unless they're. At the transfer station, I don't know, but they, I, I, I like the idea of the bins there. I like, I mean, I understand the need to separate textiles from household trash. The guy that picked those bins up when they were at Snell House, and I had talked to him a few times. You know, he was happy because those, those bins, in his opinion, in his, I mean, in the mean, were. Pretty clean, but meaning people weren't throwing a lot of stupid stuff on the bins.
Because it was right by the road.
And he liked it. He says, this is really good for him, and he liked it a lot. I think he was picking up twice a week.
And the company was, yeah, with a great location for getting stuff, cash was coming in his account. People, oh, they're dumping, it's been a little class, just let us know, because we let them know, and usually they've got it within 24 hours.
Yeah.
Right immediately.
I mean, and then the other side of it, I, I think at one point, Karen brought up this fact, that we, we have had some residents. Talked to us that the bins in front of the Snell House kinda look like not the best location. They, you know, it just was like.
Yeah, but.
I mean, if you remember when, when, when Ron Kuhn had his, his bins. Right? That, and you would stop there, pile all kinds of junk, and. And it really looked awful for years and years and years until Ron Kuhn passed by, and now the thing looks pretty clean. But those bins where they were facing the road like that, we, I had a couple of residents. And I think Karen did too, really well saying, hey, we just don't like these things. They look crappy. And you find.
Purely out of banner. Like, I get it, like.
We used to get complaints about transit. We even wear it all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can't be all things to all people.
Yeah, it's, and, and it is, people have it in terms of how things look at, but. There are people that, I mean, we had people that had a screaming fit about how very close the transit station as well. And people pulling the board.
So.
There will always be something for people to complain. It's just.
Right, I mean, so we wanna try and work with it, be flexible, but right now we're in a position where. It's important. We need to change it.
Yeah.
Exactly. And I'm with you on, this is not a bad. This is not a rational, reasonable. You know. When somebody's like, oh, great, you don't go.
You don't try, no, absolutely not.
You know, so.
No.
Back to. Our usual space. However. I would ask for the board of health to assess how much money's been generated over the last. Six months or so? And the reason.
It comes to the, the town, it doesn't.
So the reason being is that, like. I am a true distaste for that. I'm never gonna be the alleged neighbor, whoever, John Doe, or. Using. Threaten, threaten violence, whatever, in order to get their way. That is the worst kind of person. So I'm gonna ask that we face market, and we market, why we're moving them back? It's due to violence and drop offs. And people are gonna ask why. We're gonna say, nails, glass, whatever, that created vandalism, unsafe space, our vendor. Employees, and our residents. And they should talk to the people living within that area for why this is happening. Because it's really messed up. And they can be.
It is.
I can't get that. I will have to sit there with the. And I.
But aesthetic.
But that was a. And there wasn't violence being. It was, hey, don't look in. Sure, but that also wasn't a permanent space. This is a very. Permanent location for these.
Right.
It, 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 it's the perfect location. You said it yourself, it's precious. It's the perfect space for them, and here we are giving in. And I have a real strong distaste for that, and I would encourage that alleged person to come talk to us. But they don't seem to have the.
And I think, and I think we should be careful of how we order that, because we don't want to sound petty either.
But isn't.
Even though. Whether or not we're.
But like, that's public property. That is the perfect location.
I'm not saying we don't have a point. I'm not saying I don't share, I share your frustration.
So again, like.
So I, I just. If it's a statement coming from the selectmen, I think you all. Worry carefully.
Well, we need to think about that statement.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not real keen when we're doing.
I understand.
Otherwise, like, all of a sudden, the general, like, the other fan, the other side, like, you know what, I don't like them anymore either. And we're gonna start throwing nails out. Right, like, what, and then we go, we're right, we're right back in the same position.
Well, then, I mean, the only, you know, I, I, I've got this long apart, because as I said, I love a good fight. You know, it goes back to. You know, is the juice worth the squeeze? And we're gonna spend thousands of dollars legal fees.
And you're not the only one fighting. I will draw something off, I might end up fighting. The poor guy that drives.
Yeah.
Fighting the fight. All these people that are not interested in it, who make you are. We need to provide a safe place. And it's unreasonable for us to say, well, who's threatening you, take out a lawsuit or restraining order. I think that may mean it's not a viable spot. So this is our, if we want a bad land as a town, but we can't have everyone else fighting.
No, we need to solve the problem. They're our responsibility. We need to solve the problem. People are, I know of several people that are choosing not to go there anymore, because, so word is out that it is.
Not healthy.
Not healthy to go there. Um, simply because of the fact of them being moved. We need to address the problem. And apparently, the best way to address this problem is to move them to a place. And we can improve the situation where they're being placed, improve the aesthetics of them, maybe you can paint them dark green.
Well, I'm thinking this.
But that's his trademark, he can't do it, it's his business plan, color, whatever. You know, I get that.
Okay, you can ask, because the reason why we do that, really with the move, right? Like, really, then you have that dustable logo. But.
Yeah.
You can get them painted, get them painted, and be pinless for a little bit.
Yeah, so they're not so scared.
And a part of your question.
Yeah.
Um.
You can, you can ask him if they can accommodate that.
Right.
I don't know, and I certainly. He's been, from what I, I mean, I've talked to that guy a few times. You know, he's really a decent guy, so. To recognize. He just does, the guy that's here, the truck is all organized, he's got. He's a world-class operation, and, and I appreciate the fact that he does that, and I think this is very unfortunate.
Not like what it means to town. But it means the terrorists. As well, because they're taking out the, the armed terrorists. So.
We only want to put out. Bucket, and it's, it's awful, but sometimes just gonna cut that loss and. That's a. Solve the problem, so.
And that's where we're at.
So.
Just believe it. This is it all. I, I, I'm just saying, like, we have no solution here. I'm saying. We're just reopening a wound for, for those folks that didn't like it where they were before. All right, we're, we're back to it.
We'll put them on the side.
People don't like a lot of things. People don't like it. You know. Every town, you know, doesn't like anything other than. And there's all sorts of things that always kind of little changes, things about. I've managed to suck it.
Yeah. We can put this, we can put the speed trail there in front of your house and do a study.
Yeah, I know. I've got to put something right up on the side of the house. I keep reading those strong towns things, how to do towns, and it's like.
Yeah.
But, yeah. So, and the trucks that gear shift down.
Oh, yeah, or the Jake break.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I would imagine that you've heard that a few times on the morning.
Right, me and everyone else spread along that square.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I, I just, there are people that don't like it there at all, but there's no way we're gonna put someone who's not gonna complain. And. It's just kind of.
But it is a valuable resource, a service that is being provided.
Yeah.
That. It's really important to do what we can to keep this going.
Like I said, it's like. You would have asked people.
Yeah, I will say just the amount of. Staff time. On inspect, on cameras. At least for this year, exceeds the number of young men.
Oh, trying to protect it over there?
Yeah, which is.
Yes, yeah.
It's disgusting.
And if you were to monetize the time that we put into this.
Yeah.
With staff. And the cost of the cameras that have been installed on the highway. It would certainly exceed just the media.
And to continue and battle to the legal.
And then going to legal anything else, is that?
It's just not, it's just not smart. It's not smart.
So, uh. Are we going to put somewhere they were working and looking? Up beside the post office on that road? Is that all along with this?
Uh, my, my. My colleagues can wait. Just to put them. On the road. And ask, um, highway road commissioners to grade that spot off, because it's not level.
Okay.
Do that without.
But.
We don't have MCOs.
Right.
All right.
They said we could put them there.
Temporarily until what they were. What they were asked essentially to put them back.
Yeah.
Temporary.
Temporary, right.
They could be.
I think if they're off. I, you know what, I, Karen's heard it, I've heard, I've had two or three people say to me, boy, they look out, but can't we put some aggravated. Front of them or fence? Well, the, the truth is, we don't own that lane. And we're not gonna.
The lane is not exactly sure.
It's, it's not, but those, those containers don't enhance in, in any way.
Right, but I don't really consider this a question. People, you know, they don't like it, and they're pushing it, and they're pushing, they, they, they're trying to move it. Immediately. So the big question is, can we talk to MCO about the post office road? And, and just leave it where it is, thinking we might get a resolution on that next month or weeks? Or do we get them right where they work for the moment, and then have them again?
What would you like to do?
What, what do you think works?
Just put, put them back to where they were. Why don't we, um.
They can be reoriented, so they're not so, like, spacing. They're almost.
Why don't, why don't you, could you vote to allow them to. Um, work with that.
Yes.
Number one, number one option on the side of the street. The entranceway, and then secondarily, if that is not gonna work, put them back where they were temporarily.
Yeah.
Does that, does that work?
Yeah. You're giving that one?
Yeah, I just.
I know, I, I hear you.
We're all over.
We gotta rise above it.
I'm getting great.
Yes, it's incredibly.
It is.
Uh, is, uh, a larger field that we have.
I think people were concerned about it being the same issues that the library, that it looks hidden, and people are gonna. Abuse the dumping.
Pretty vulnerable to dumping when it's up. Like, people, people keep, like, to drop in after hours and.
For a couch.
But those things, yeah, happen, yeah. Kind of do a nice.
Yeah.
Yes. Sit there and watch the dog.
There are, there are issues that a lot of. When it gets dark. And the, you know, the police have been in there many times with all kinds of stuff going on there. Although, could those bins be exacerbate that, and someone just lets someone fire for the hell of it? I, I don't know, but there are a lot of fields that parking lot at night has had its issues in the particular, in the summer. So. I'm gonna make a most appear that we, um, allow. The bin relocation. To be negotiated by the town administrator. With the present developer of the mud district. For a permanent or semi-permanent location for those bins. Is that okay?
Second.
Hey. Oh, it's a fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
Thank you, folks. We need to, you know, Johnson's in the hospital right now. I don't know if she's out, but. Um, I might have developed a project in the winter, so.
And, and, and so just by the way, I know you're talking about the transfer station, right? I, I do wanna make one comment. I, I, I absolutely believe, and I love the transfer station. We went there Saturdays, and we did all bullshit, and we did everything else, right?
Yeah.
And we all went at places, so we're all stopped cookies.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was everything over there, and, and, you know. It was always, it was, it was a, a community event to go to the transfer station on Saturdays. But I will tell you that curbside has been good. I'm gonna tell you that Shaw. Shaw has done, those guys have done an unbelievable job. We have had issues with containers not being emptied. And when they were called, Shaw called, they sent a truck that day or the next morning to pick up that container. I, I don't know how. It's getting better than that.
And it is slowly, there was a lot of pushback early. We didn't want to go with the local group, we wanna work with us. So we just had to be quiet and little by little. People have found it, and it's grown, and because we're not price gouging, and. By entering the prices, and Jack is not gonna do anything else. Working for a while. And more people have decided.
It's, they do, they do a, they get far. It's, they do, they do a, they get far, they do, they get far, best choice we ever made with them, I know we had a couple of other vendors that were around when this was done, and yeah, I, I missed the social.
They were the ones that, the transfer station, they were the ones that, and in fact, they were the ones that suggested, we were really gonna cut a lot of costs by going to the officers instead of the truck. So, I am so happy not to be running the transfer station trying to keep the staff.
Yeah, I can imagine.
The service from the local, pick up people.
Yeah, yeah, it's been, I think it's been very successful.
Bringing a lot of people. Yeah.
Good, thanks for coming in. All right, our last thing is the 2024 annual report.
And that was fun, that was good.
Four minutes in now.
Yeah, um, okay, so we are looking at the annual report, and the way we've done it, and giving some thought to how to refresh it, and rethink how to do it. And, um, Sue and I have been working on, kind of looking through examples from other communities, um, do there's what can include, have it funded, et cetera. And, um, can I help you?
Oh, there's feedback.
Um, and so, I don't know, I guess we're like into contests. But, um, one of the things we were bringing, to, um, bring some increased attention to the, and engage the community in that, is to, um, is to have like a photo contest, um, like a resident's photo, like, and we'll work for it, we are, we're accepting changes, design changes, et cetera. Sue, please, um, about the feedback, but in some ways, it is sort of a check the box exercise, now, um, 23, 24, I'll give you some, so it's kind of how we do it. And so this is one of the ways we're attempting to get more attention, so.
Are there other, um, other formats that you look at that you're finding to be feasible, accessible, or, I mean.
So the MMA has, uh, annually, we give out awards for us, and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I just use those, and kind of taken, taken those as good models to use, um, in some ways, they're very similar, but. Super, super different, they're far more attractive, I'd say, the designs are more attractive, but the substance of them is not entirely different in some ways, in some cases, in other cases, they are. A better, more sophisticated, more visual, et cetera.
It's been very pure too.
Yeah. I like the books, yeah, I like the books, I actually, I keep the notes in, so I think they're kind of neat in that sort of, though, I guess, one of my guys had someone like a.
It's really a done.
I have, I've been going back forty years.
Yeah, uh, but I like the idea of maybe having a look on the front cover, and the back cover, things like that, that'd be nice, um.
Just wanting to see fun, you know, without, you're making sure you have a level comfort for this thing.
I'd like to see some of the sample. Part of towns I can.
Okay, how, um, I can email you that, there's a link right on the, maybe we go and just. You can see kind of the, um, folks who have won awards on that day.
Yeah.
Hey, this is a reference point, it'd be nice to add it, maybe we.
What was the award that we won so? Oh, the website, Kenny Leva was.
Yeah.
Remember that?
That's back in the day.
Yeah, and Council for starting.
Yeah.
We had that space.
Yeah, sounds good. We don't have to vote on that today.
If you want us to come back to your, or email, or maybe we, we vote on something, or recommend something next week, or have you?
On the annual report, I think, yeah, I wanna see what the norms will look like, we have some comparative analysis before we just go off, and, and email, or however, it's good. I mean, we can look around at what other towns have, but I don't know, it would be interesting also to understand how many towns are still printing these, I mean, there was, there was a point in time, and the prior county, assistant town administrator, I think there was like 500 copies up in the attic.
I know, I removed.
Did you do that?
These are these still, these still print off.
Man, I don't know.
Last year, we did 250, maybe, we had like thirty left.
That's not, that's not bad, really, that's not terrible.
Are they available on? Many households. I literally moved eighty boxes. No, I didn't. No, I didn't burn them, I put them in the recycle, in my recycle, every week. It's three boxes, yeah.
And it's not saying that ours will look like the ones I'm sending you, it's just like, those are some models that we can, that's all.
So I'm just, you know, devil's advocate, I'm sure there are folks gonna say, but any of them won't fix it.
Yeah.
But, so, this is just to, just refresh it, make it.
I mean, we don't, it's more work for me, so you don't want to. I mean, no, it's definitely, it's definitely, um, Sue, yeah, so if the, if the opinion is, keep it the way it is, then that's, not that, but you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If, if that's the preference, then that's.
But I like the idea of having it on the website, and, you know, you know what pagination is, pagination is a, really is doing a lot with documents, and if you you might have a five hundred page document, wish it could have seen something about something, if that worked on the website, right, you could pull up highway, go, go and see what the road commission is, we could let that house there, you know, I think that's a step, yeah. And that's part of.
One of the things that's one of them.
So it's almost like a half, is that the time?
It is the same size, we used to have them there, it's big.
Yeah, it was too little.
They used, they were eight and a half.
They are not.
Are they, I thought they were the smaller ones.
No, they, no, they've been eating half of them.
So maybe we look at a couple options, like the always the.
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple options, and like, keeping the wheel the same.
Cool, yes.
Um, I would like to say that just, except for Harold, you know, the data, now, we've got these things, you know, let's not spend too much money. And, you know, looking for alternatives, you know, not be sick.
We wouldn't spend any more money.
Your money?
Zero, it's just our, it's just work, it's time, it's just work. It's no money, it's no money.
Well, all right, and we would, we would increase in, that is the case, then, that's, it will happen.
In fact, if our budget isn't fixed, then we may not, we may not be able to afford it.
There it is.
You're laughing, in my cuts, it's tough.
All right, anything else?
We can do a job.
I'll accept that.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourned?
All right.
Very much, everyone?